Would you confirm that the live stream is back up? Yes, it is. I see it.
It's getting there. Yeah. Not quite set up yet, but it's give it a couple of minutes. All right, we're done.
Chair Cole, we may proceed.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Chair Cole, is that okay if I start?
Please, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. It is good to see everybody. We're going to start with the September 16th, 2021 Finance and Budget Committee. I'm the Vice Chair today, so you have to put up with me once again. But before we get started, let's, we need to make certain findings on the record regarding the necessity for conducting this meeting by electronic participation without a physical quorum present due to Corona pandemic. So in accordance with Tennessee Code annotated section 844108B2, as Chair of the Finance and Budget Committee today, I want to offer the following facts and circumstances in support of finding a necessity for the Finance and Budget Committee to conduct its September 16th, 2021 meeting without a physical presence of a quorum. Number one, the Finance and Budget Committee is scheduled to take up important Finance and Budget Committee matters that require timely action by the Finance and Budget Committee, including receiving an update on the university's budget, construction and facilities, CARES Act, funding and enrollment. Number two, participation by electronic means is necessitated by ongoing health and safety issues pertaining to the COVID-19 pandemic. Electronic participation for the committee meeting is necessary to ensure the safety of the board members, staff and guests while the institution implements additional measures to resume its in-person operations. Number three, according accordingly, I move that the Finance and Budget Committee find that participation by a quorum of the Finance and Budget Committee members by electronic means of communication is necessary. Van, do I hear a second?
Actually, it's now Trustee Andre Johnson and Richard Lewis. I want to make sure that Trustee Johnson has been able to join us.
That's right.
Nancy City would be on, so.
Yeah, I just texted him. Let me make sure I know he was standing by, so it's, you know, let's make sure.
Okay, he's logging in.
Arlene, he's in the waiting room. Let him in, please.
He isn't showing up on my screen yet. He's in the waiting room. I'm looking for him.
Text me and says in the waiting room.
Okay.
Hi, Arlene. I got him.
Okay, great. There he is.
Hello, Andre.
Hello.
Hi, Andre. How are you? Steve Corbille, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you, sir?
Good, doing good. So I just read all the things that our lawyers said I needed to read about electronic reasons we're here, and they made a motion that we move forward accordingly. Can I get a second from you?
I'll second it.
Great. The question on the motion defined that the participation by quorum of the Finance and Budget Committee members by electronic means of communication is necessary. Secretary Pendleton, can you call the role, please?
Yes, Trustee Corbille.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Great. The motion carries. We'll proceed with the meeting and the quorum present. Again, Andre, thank you for signing in and others that are here. It is good to see everybody. At this point, if committee members, if you cannot hear or speak to the other committee members or board members, please state so now. Also, for each committee member participating electronically, please identify individuals who are present in the location in which you are participating. At this time, we like to call the role. Secretary Pendleton, please call the role.
Trustee Corbille.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. First agenda item is the approval of the June 17th, 2021 Finance and Budget Committee meeting minutes. The meeting, the minutes for the Finance and Budget Committee meeting, June 17th, are included in your review and in your packet. I move that the Finance and Budget Committee recommend to the full board the approval of the June 17th, 2021 Finance and Budget Committee meeting minutes as contained in your board materials. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? The question on the motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes to the Finance and Budget Committee minute, meeting of June 17th is containing your board materials is, is on the table. Please call role. Secretary Pendleton?
Trustee Corbille.
Hi.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Hi.
Okay, the motion's approved. The next agenda item is informational. It's an update on university update on the budget. Information regarding this is in your packet of materials. President Glover, could you please provide us with pertinent information regarding this?
Thank you. I want to call on VP Douglas Allen to present this.
Thank you, President. Thank you, Chair, as well. I want to turn your attention to page 71 of your packet. That starts with the statement of revenues, expenditures, transfers, budget to actual. This is for the period ending August 31, 2021. First line that I would like to discuss is the tuition and fees. We had a conservative budget related to tuition and fees. However, we've actually seen an uptick again due to President Glover's hard work, also the Office of Enrollment. We've collected 63% of our tuition and fees during the fall semester. So we're actually about 8% above our budgeted projections. So that's a huge plus for the university. We skipped down a couple of lines here, and I'm in the fiscal year to date column, fiscal year to date column. That's the second column. You will see from state appropriations down to foundation gifts. We have not currently received those revenue streams as those normally come in. For example, state appropriations come in on a quarterly basis. So we will receive that first quarter allotment here in the next couple of weeks to apply to our overall budget. Sales and services and other activities. You will see we budgeted 5.9 million. And we're currently sitting at 1.8 million versus 1.5 this same time last year. This is primarily due to athletics. We've seen an uptick again in folks providing the resources necessary to run our athletic departments. So again, that's a huge plus for our university. Auxiliary enterprises, sales and services. You will see that that is up over last year, roughly $5.6 million. That's in column two, the FYTD column, 15.7 million versus 10.1 million from last year. Again, we have more students on campus participating in other services that being dining services, et cetera. So again, really huge impact from the university. On the expenditure side of the house, we are actually trending somewhat down from prior year. Now, with that being said, some of that is due to timing of when expenses actually hit the general ledger. Okay, so just for full transparency, so that you don't necessarily think we're operating $1.5 million under last year is just when expenditures hit. But overall, we are still on target based on the budget that the board approved at our prior board meeting. Okay. I'm going to roll down to transfers. As we mentioned in the previous board meeting, mandatory transfers are made for debt service payments. We have bonds such as for energy savings programs, other projects that we've funded through debt service. There will be no transfers in fiscal year 2022 from the reserve fund for operations. Okay, again, no transfers out of the reserve funds for fiscal year 2022. I'm going to turn your attention to page 72. It's a pie chart. This just breaks down how our revenue streams are allocated. Okay, that 56% of tuition, 56% of our total revenues is from tuition and fees. So it's important that we have the numbers that we have for, for enrollment. Again, that, that's great. And as I mentioned too, we were very conservative on the tuition and fee side. We expect to be, oh, to be over the budgeted amount as it relates to tuition and fees. So we will keep you updated throughout, throughout the fiscal year. Okay. I will turn your attention to page 73. And this is the breakdown of allocations for expenditures. Again, instruction is our largest expenditure pool at 47%. Our goal is still to get that, excuse me, at 50% or greater. So that, that is really our, our goal here. We continue to move forward as it relates to operations of the university. Are there any questions as to our budget to actual ending August 31, 2021?
So my takeaway is, is that you feel like we're on track. There's a timing issues with both expenditures and revenue. But if I recall in our, in our November meeting, we're really going to delve into kind of the next more updated budget. So we'll all have a chance to get more detail, but at this point, I guess directionally, you're giving us a good view of, hey, we're in a good, we're in a good place.
Yes, we are in a good place. And actually, we are about 115,000 surplus as of August 31. So yes, we are definitely moving in the right direction. Absolutely.
Well, and to hear for you, for you to be so bullish about us not transferring dollars out for operations, I applaud that and hope it continues. So that's awesome.
Absolutely. And again, I would like to state that we look at it from a standpoint of trending towards a zero-based budget, okay, and operating in the means in which has been approved by the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. Are there any more COVID funds that we're expecting? Have we exhausted all that money? What, what's the deal on that, those funds?
Trustee Johnson, actually, I will give just a brief report.
That's coming up.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry.
You want to say it now? We can, we can.
You can just do it now. It's an information report. That's a good point.
Absolutely. Let's move to page 81 of your packet. That's the higher education emergency relief funds as of August 31, 2021. As mentioned in previous meetings, our university received three different pots, that being HIRF-1, which is the CARES Act, HIRF-2, the CRSA, and HIRF-3, the ARP. And to date, we have received a total award of $115,573,226. That's at the bottom of page 81. So that's all three buckets. Okay. If you turn your attention back to the top of the page, if you go to column three, it says expenditures per banner. As of August 31, we had expended 21.6 million of the HIRF-1 funds. The HIRF-2 funds, 9.2 million. And we have not expended anything in the HIRF-3 funds, in which we just received those funds here just a couple of weeks ago. The federal government extended the deadline to spend these funds. It was originally May of 2022, and they moved that to September of 2022. Considering the fact that the Delta variance really picked up, they understand that we have additional needs need to be met and being able to extend that funding out a couple of months. So we've taken necessary steps and actions to make sure that we use these funds in accordance with the federal guidelines. That's what we're doing. We've looking at earmarking funds as it relates for students as well. So at the end of the day, we are taking the approach of using these funds in the best need of the university.
You may want to mention how much we earmarked that we, although it looks like there's a lot left. Everything has been in, our funds have been encumbered or earmarked.
Yes, ma'am, sure will. So we've earmarked over $2 million for technology. That is for the classrooms and for the students and also for our professors, for faculty members. We've also earmarked for student balances, about 23 million. That's going to assist with student balances for the upcoming summer, or for this current semester, but we're still working through putting that, getting those funds on the student accounts. We've set aside over $10 million for scholarship needs as it relates to students' help. We've also earmarked funds, again, as Dean Stevenson said earlier in his presentation, in reference to extended housing, auxiliary housing off campus. One of the reasons for that auxiliary housing again was to keep students safe and, and practice the social distancing as much as we could and have areas to quarantine as needed. But again, we have a very small number of students that are actually in quarantine right now. And again, that's a testament to Dr. Glover and Dean Stevenson as we move forward here on campus. We've also earmarked funds for additional PPE equipment to make sure that we keep faculty, students and staff safe. One of the concerns with faculty, when they're in the classroom, they want to make sure that they have, that they're safe in the classroom. Even though we have 50%, over 50% of our students vaccinated, it's important that we look at all facets of, of safety. So we've added additional cleaning supplies, et cetera, in, in the academic spaces. So again, we are moving forward and, and using these funds to the best benefit of TSU.
If you could, if you could, I mean, because you're right, if you look at the balances, there's overall 84 million. But I hear you a lot and tell you, Dr. Glover, the minute, there's a lot of that has either just not been spent or will be spent. I think it'd be helpful for the board, because we're going to get questions about it, obviously. To maybe if you, for the next meeting, maybe can you do a schedule of what you just kind of described? To say, okay, of what's left, here's what we intend to spend it on. Here's what we, you know, for both students, scholarships, but also what can we have at, at the university level for institutional support regarding, you know, like you said, IT initiatives and other, that would, that would just be helpful as we, you know, get questions in the community.
And we did prepare the schedule yesterday.
Okay.
Was meeting today, but we were going to go back and double check. That's why we're just talking.
That's fine.
But we definitely have a, was having for December, for November meeting. We're trying to see how many, what we did first. Trustee Corbille, we apply, had the students' balances as we pass it about. We first got the grants and other federal aids that they were getting.
Of course.
Some had loans, but this was more or less a last resort payments. We were trying to make sure we got all that taken care of and it was accurate. And then it will be written, November will be a better month for us because they are still paying balances right now.
Right. Well, what a wonderful thing, honestly. I mean, the tragedy of COVID itself, to have these types of resources to make us a stronger university is just quite an opportunity, I think, so.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment? I just want to say that I really appreciate the time that CFO Allen is taking to, to go through these reports and the detail. I think that's very important.
I agree. Thank you. Andre, any questions about that? No, you, you had asked about the CARES fund.
No, thank you. I think my biggest concern was just that we were using it in accordance with the federal guidelines. I know some other institutions and other businesses have had some problems with that. So I just want to make sure that, that we are earmarking or, or keeping good records of how we use those funds to ensure that they're in the, the government guidelines.
Good point. Good point. And again, I think, I think that November schedule would be very helpful for us to be able to tell that story.
And Trustee Johnson and Corbille, other schools have kind of started looking to us and asking us how we're doing this. We've kind of become not the model. We've definitely become one of the persons that others have called, or what is the university others have called on to assist in whether we should make this, whether it's doable or not. So Trustee, Vapie Allen is very good in every regard as, as far as knowing the law and what can be applied.
Very good. Well, thank you.
That's great.
Really good.
I just have one more quick question kind of related to this, and I don't want to skip ahead. I don't have the materials in front of me. But how are we going to ensure that we're closer to a balanced budget and not let these COVID funds, you know, distract us thinking, oh, we were able to balance some things with those. We want to ensure that as the next fiscal year is approached, we work toward a balanced budget so that, you know, we don't have these deficits and we don't have to use the reserves moving forward. And I know that might be a, something that we talk about a little more detail in the November meeting. But I think it's important that we start getting on that track and really moving toward that sooner than later.
We agree.
Completely agree.
Great comment.
So again, November will be the time, I think, Mr. Allen, for us to really look at that, because as we projected in the future, we want to make sure, to Andre's point, we're just not having covered, so, so to spoken, my old business, covering our sins with one-time pickups. So, you know, I think that'll be a great discussion for us to really delve into that we're, we really are on a good run rate, so to speak, and for the next several years to add, hopefully add back to our reserves.
That's a good question. Thank you.
Any other questions about the CARES funding? You have very good, very good detail. Thank you so much on that.
Thank you.
One more, Trustee Corbille.
Sure, of course.
So for, how does it, how does the transfer of the funds to pay student balances affect the, the financial statement? So for instance, the 74 million, is that, is it recorded as tuition or is it, how is it recognized?
So the tuition and fees number is separate than the revenue generated from using the COVID dollars. Okay, so basically when we have a student balance, we actually credit that student's balance. And we then recognize the revenue which is set apart from tuition and fee revenue. So to answer your question too, and it's a very good question about CARES funding is one-time dollars. And I think everyone on this call knows that. So these funds are not used to balance our budget in FY22. Okay, these funds again are looking at some of the needs outside of the normal operating needs for the university. So it's in a sense a separate standalone pot. And going forward for when we perform the FY23 budget, again, we will look at it from a zero-based standpoint, based on the revenues that we project to come in. That being tuition and fee, state appropriations being the largest two pools. And, and base our budget based, you know, on that particular revenue streams.
Kind of the normal revenue streams, not a, not additional funds for getting through CARES. I think that's very appropriate, not very appropriate.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members or committee members? Again, thank you for that report. Let's go back to the construction and facilities update. Again, Dr. Glover or Mr. Allen, who would like to take that?
Mr. Allen.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, President. Thank you, Chair. Page 76. The entire page of 76 up to the first two items on page 77 relate to the tornado recovery. I won't necessarily read through each one of these, but you can see that the process, honestly, it's a little slower than what we would like. There are two reasons for that. One is working with the insurance company to determine what the adjusted value is or fair value to replace certain buildings or to renovate certain items. So that's one thing. And then two, the projects have slowed down some just because of material costs and being able to get things in a timely fashion. So I just want the committee members to know that we are moving forward. Mr. Smart, he is working with the insurance company a pretty regular basis to make sure that we are getting the appropriate amount to replace these said projects. Okay.
Mr. Allen, what, 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 refresh, remember, what was the total estimated loss for this, just a tornado recovery piece? With all these elements, what was, how much, how many dollars are we talking about?
It was around 25 to 30 million dollars.
That's what they're saying. Dr. Johnson, Curtis Johnson has been the person that's working with, working with facilities management and the, and the insurance company, because we had a higher number, but the number they're looking at is around 30 million.
Okay.
And Dr. Glover, you're right. That's part of the reason why this is kind of taking a little bit longer too, because there is a difference in assessment of fair value for these projects.
Yeah, we're looking at, we're looking at one, they're looking at a number, and we're looking at the cost to replace the existing capacity. So we're, we're not quite on, we haven't quite reconciled those two, those conversations yet, but we will.
Well, insurance companies are involved. So there you go, right? So, yeah, okay.
All right. I'll turn your attention then to page 77. I think one of the most important things on page 77 is the new residence hall. And it is on schedule. And again, I want to tip my hat to Dr. Johnson as he's worked closely with this project and keeping it on track, not only from a timeline perspective, but also from a fiscal perspective. When you're thinking about a $70 million project, it could easily get out of control. But again, we, we've performed great due diligence as, in respect to the project. So that again is huge. Are there any other questions on any of the projects that we have going on at this time?
You know, one, one thing that, that continues to come up in past discussions about projects about is the bidding process with minority businesses and contractors have, particularly see the nude food science building. What's, what's the latest status of that?
That's a very good question. Dr. Glover?
I was going to ask you, Dr. Johnson is on, I don't see his name on here, but he's Dr. Curtis Johnson. There he is. We, I was saying that we, as you know, we go through the bid process with the state.
Yeah, I know.
They have the last word. We can make strong recommendations and really talk to them very much about it, but they have the last word and, and who's being selected. So Dr. Johnson, come from there.
Thank you, Madam President, to both chair. We've advocated approximately 50% of the contractors to have onboard with major projects. We have been able to get up to 28% and we're still pushing with, with major projects.
Is there anything else we can do as a board to improve that with particularly the new projects coming on?
What facilities and VP Allen and myself have been discussing is the identifying contractors and getting them on the state contract list ahead of time and working with the various contractor, meet the state guideline to increase the pool of contractors on that list. So we'll have a better selection to work with.
Okay. All right. Well, I just, I think that just needs to continue to be top of mind for. Okay. All right. Well, I just, I think that just needs to continue to be top of mind for, for what we do, and particularly with all the great projects that we have in the, in the pipeline here. Any other comments?
We totally agree with you, and that's why we're pushing hard in that thing.
Okay, very good. It's a great list, by the way. Mr. Allen, President Glover, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot going on here. This is, this is exciting. Very exciting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just speak. I want to thank VP Allen for the detail. Thank you for that. Very informative and for the work you're doing, your approach. Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Thank you as well.
Appreciate it.
Agreed. Any other questions about the construction facilities update from, again, anybody on the call, any board members or committee members?
I'd like to ask this question of Dr. Johnson. Dr. Johnson, it sounds like you're at the twenty-eight percent because you're not able to identify minority businesses. Is that correct? Or are they not on the state list?
They're not on this. It's a combination, and what we're, what we're trying to do is educate them and aid them in the process. And therefore, we will hopefully increase the, not just for TSU, but increase the pool of minorities contractors in the state.
Okay.
Yeah, what is, what we're saying is, if something comes up, the first place is the state list, you're on the state list. And if not, we have a case now where we're trying to get an alarm on the state list, and it has a very good product that will be very helpful to the university with range of COVID and minimizing our risk. But we try now to get that person, this company on the state list. So that's really key to us to, we may just have to do some more education sessions, trustee Corvill, to find out, invite minority contract, have some orientation, some minority vendor meetings to show them how to be on the state list. And just because we've managed to do, to get, you know, over a fourth of the work already, just by pushing it and just being very deliberate, very intentional in our efforts. But we still want to get, we were saying, someone told us fifty percent was too high, but it isn't, you know.
No, it's not.
We want to have fifty percent. We've been told by even someone from the state that it was too high. But not an official from the state, because I'm going to go on record, and they were saying, they were saying it was quite aggressive and daunting, for the words. But we don't think so. We're still pushing for that.
And again, I know enough to be dangerous about this stuff, but we can identify very good, strong general contractors that hold the bulk of these bigger projects. And again, I, again, I'm speaking a little bit of ignorance, that that could be a key thing. Curtis, is that something that you're really working on at the general contractor level? Because I get all the subs will be part of that, but typically, a lot of the funds flow go through general contractors.
That's correct. You're on target with that.
Okay.
We were, we were able to work with a, a GC for the new residence hall, and he's monitoring that project for us and keeping us updated on the needs and various capacities of what's going on with that facility. So we were able to get a minority contractor to do that for us.
Great. Well, let's keep that top of mind. Thank you, Curtis. Appreciate it. Any other questions about the construction facilities? Again, Mr. Allen, thank you for that. Let's move on with the finance and budget report. Again, I'll defer to President Glover or Mr. Allen.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, President. Thank you, Chair. I'll be very brief. I had three items to discuss, first being the financial statements. Director Davis gave a really good presentation as it relates to the FY nineteen audit and the findings, and also our corrective action plan. The FY twenty audit is due to be released here any moment now. Once we've received that audit, we will also process and answer any audit findings that they have for the FY twenty audit. We expect those to be somewhat similar just because the, the reports were issued so close together, okay? And Chair Cole actually mentioned that earlier today, so thank you. Just from the financial planning and operations, again, we will come back, excuse me, in November with more detail as it relates to the budget preparation and also a more detailed report on the CARES Act funding. The SACCLC accreditation, again, we mentioned earlier under section thirteen-two, which is a core requirement. We expect an unmodified opinion for the FY twenty audit. As Dr. Glover mentioned, FY nineteen audit was an unmodified or clean opinion in which those two documents will satisfy that core requirement under the SACs accreditation standards. Again, I just want to say it's definitely a team approach. I do appreciate presenting to you all today, and I hope the information that you all were provided is helpful as we move forward. And again, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Hey, I have, this is Andre Johnson. I have one question. That's great news that we're finally getting these old audits and those complete. My question is, how are we going to ensure that moving forward, that the, the audits are done in a timely fashion, and we don't get into the same problems with the findings that we got into, you know, over the past several years?
Well, trustee Johnson, one thing Dr. Glover has done, it was her initiative to get the right folks in place. And let me say that the university has really good policy procedures. It's just that they need to be followed, okay? And you need to have strong individuals in those respective areas that they work to get the, the job done. I will say that we are currently in the FY twenty-one audit process. We are compiling the financial statements now and the supporting documentations to provide to the auditors. We're doing that in conjunction with getting the FY twenty audit completed. So we cannot, of course, provide a draft statement of twenty-one until we roll the beginning balances for twenty. But with that being said, we have a stronger staff now that understands the accounting functions and also the internal control processes that are in place. One, one very important key, as Chairman Cole had, Chair Lady Cole had mentioned earlier, was the providing the necessary training. So we've done some in-house training as it relates to Banner, which is our ERP system. We have what we call Banner experts in-house. Then we also will have the Banner consultants come out in February to reassess our system and to also provide hands-on training in each of the respective module areas. So I'm glad to, to report that we are moving in the right direction as far as the staffing, as far as revising our internal processes as well. So to answer your question, these are the things that we're doing so that we don't repeat what's happened in the past.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Trustee Johnson, attorney Johnson, and I know you've worked on the audit committee. We addressed a number of these items in that, you know, we can't have repeat findings on, on the items. And also, there is a list, and I know you don't have the material with you, of steps that have been taken. And I think we have made it absolutely clear that we have to get these, these items in, in control, under control and cleared up. But I do, when you get a chance, when you get to your information, to review that list of steps that have been taken, I think there's some very good things on there.
Oh, thank you for the information, and sorry, I was, I missed that earlier.
No, just thank you for being here now.
Yep, very good. Again, Mr. Allen, thank you so much. I mean, this has been really good information. I, I'm, I'm really pleased that we're starting to get what I would call more real-time information about our financials, but also about details and all the other funds flow. Those are something that we really didn't have before. And the quicker we can have an idea where we are financially, even on a monthly basis eventually. I know we're not there yet, but the better we can then address the issues as they come up. So I just wanted to personally thank you for that.
Thank you as well.
So the next on the agenda is the update on enrollment. This is an informational discussion, items and no voters required. President Glover. Or who wants to take this one? Oh, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. Now I'm on mute. All right, so go ahead.
There you are.
Thank you, President Glover and Chair Corvill. Good morning, everyone. I also have good news to share this morning. Our enrollment here at the university is up in both undergraduate and graduate students. And let me just first say that this is the result of the collective efforts of our faculty, our staff, our students, and our administrators across all divisions here at the university, under the leadership of President Glover. And President Glover, I want to thank you also for your vision, tenacity, and your relentless passion just to ensure that our students continue to matriculate each year despite the pandemic and their personal challenges. We also are really grateful for the hard work of all of our recruiters, our admissions associates, our enrollment specialists, their student support teams, and new student program teams. They daily lead the charge to bring us the new class of students that we have, in addition to making sure that our continuing students return. In your board materials, you receive preliminary numbers for this fall. The updated numbers for fall twenty-twenty-one are as follows. For undergraduate, there's six thousand three hundred and seventy-five students. And for graduate, there's one thousand and two students. That's a total of eight thousand seventy-seven students. And kudos to our entire team, and we're very, very excited and pleased with that progress. I also provided for you a comparison of where we were this time last year with enrollment, which that was sixty-seven fifteen was our total enrollment last year. And this year, again, it's eight zero seven seven, eight thousand seventy-seven students. That represents a six percent increase in our enrollment. Very excited about that. I also prepared for you in the board materials, a comparison pre-pandemic of where we were in twenty nineteen as compared to where we are now, so that you can see the progress in the work that's been done. In your board materials, you'll also see a chart that shows you for fall twenty-twenty-two, this is where we are focused even now. Students are already applying and very excited about becoming a part of the TSU family. Our recruitment cycle has already kicked off. We have over, at the time of this report, there were six, six hundred and sixty-two applicants, but that number has jumped now to over two thousand applicants already for fall twenty-twenty-two. And that's due to a lot, a lot of the new innovative recruitment and marketing. Ms. Kelly Sharp, along with the academic deans, have really been doing a lot of outreach, partnering with our recruitment team. And it's just been a great experience seeing all of our teams moving toward the same goal to make sure that our enrollment continues to increase. On the, on the second page, I wanted to highlight just a few, and I won't read them all, but just highlight a few of our recruitment and retention efforts for fall twenty-twenty-one that kind of shows you how we got here and what we can accredit this increase to. Number one, the vision of our president and our leadership team, we made the decision to pay the balances for spring twenty-twenty, all twenty-twenty and spring twenty-one, that allowed a lot of students who would have been challenged to return. In addition to that, we offered tuition assistance grants using the CARES Fund acting, CARES Fund Act to support students with their current balances for the fall. We've also increased our outreach via phone, emails, text, and social media. This was, of course, brought on by the pandemic with everyone being virtual, but it also proved that we could do more with the technology that we have at our hands, and that's proved to be very beneficial. We had two very exciting big groups that we brought to the campuses. The inaugural class of the Dr. Levi Watkins Junior Institute, there were over three hundred and sixty students that applied to get into that program, which that program has been nationally recognized. In addition to that, we recruited, under the leadership of President Glover, we recruited a competitive group of high-achieving students from Florida, Miami-Dade County School Board Member, and Congresswoman Frederica Wilson in Miami has a national move of mentors. It's called We Are Five Thousand. And we were able to partner and bring a lot of talented students who are doing well in our freshman class through that program. We've expanded our admissions and recruitment and enrollment services team to have a broader net. We've also collaborated, worked collaboratively with our college deans and our academic advisors and student affairs, marketing, and public relations, just to make sure that we're all using our efforts and really being efficient in our outreach to reach more students. Lastly, I'd just like to point to a few of the strategic priorities for recruitment and retention for fall twenty-two. We're going to continue to focus on increasing the efforts to get our traditional high school students, both in-state and two-hundred-and-fifty-mile radius. Of course, that gives us an advantage because the tuition is, is lower and students are able to continue to progress without any financial challenges. Market and promote our opening of the new dormitories, the health science building. There are so many great projects that are happening here at TSU and getting that story out through marketing and also digital media. We're excited about the new plans that we're rolling out as we speak. We've enhanced our technological infrastructure, but we're going to continue to improve the data analytics that we get from the technology that we're using now to increase our return on investment and also create higher applicant conversions. Lastly, let me just say that there are so many dynamic new programs in the graduate school, also in the undergraduates, undergraduate programs. There are two-plus-two agreements. These, these programs allow us to hit the road and really share a path for students to succeed academically and take the next steps in their career as well here at TSU. So we're very excited. We've got a lot of work. We've done a lot of work, and we've seen a lot of results, but we are already charged up for fall twenty-two and very committed to making sure we continue this upward trend. President Glover, that concludes my report.
Mr. Chairman, just on the, just to comment on the Levi Watkins Institute, which Dean Barbara Merle and Dr. Glover has been working with, it has received tremendous coverage at Bahari in the newsletter and information coming out from the president. There were pictures also that were distributed, which showed Dr. Glover and Dr. Hildridge and Dean Merle making presentations. So it has gotten tremendous coverage, and I just want to commend you all on that.
With the alumni assistant, I mean, we, someone puts the statement out that we were looking for young men. I, I didn't know it was going out. In fact, this Merle had made a, had a conversation with, I think, one person. It kind of just spread. And when alumni had started circulating, it was a great thing, because people started writing and started calling. We said, what is going on? How did they get this information so quickly? So we had all those, then Frederica Wilson, Karen from, Frederica Wilson invited us to come down to Florida to talk to her team. So Mr. Isid and I went down to Miami and met with a group of young men, and so twelve of those came to TSU. I mean, they had, I think everyone, one was one to Duke, one was one to Stanford. They had, they had, these were not just students who were just picking up. These were just great students with three fives and above and high GPA.
Wow, excellent. Just a comment, Mr. Isid, again, thank you, and thank, please thank your team on behalf of our board and our committee. I mean, what a great job you guys are doing, getting applicants in and having the, what I call the funnel increase. I mean, one, one could say that this has really been a remarkable turnaround in the funnel. I'll go back because I'm, I'm kind of a data guy and an operations guy. If you go back to page eighty-seven, I think as a, as a university and as a board, we got to continue, continue to have folks come to our university. So one looks at the undergraduate, and really strategically, we probably need to pivot and talk, continue more about retention. I mean, if you look at the freshman class, up, up, up over three years, but sophomores essentially down every year, little bit tick up this past year, junior down, seniors down. I don't know about the specials, you know, undergraduate special, non-degree, but we're looking at the, the actual core. So again, it might strategically be a good place to have a, a pivot towards much more retention. And I know it's about money. I know it's about scholarships. When I look at all your action items, all of them are, nearly all of them are all about recruitment, which, again, we got to continue to recruit and get folks through the top of the funnel. So more than a, more a comment than anything, Dr. Glover and Mr. Isid, is maybe as we think forward next year, we need to really continue to emphasize the retention piece, and what can, what can we do to impact that? Because I think that's what this is about. What the data is showing means that continues to be our biggest struggle. But again, great job on improving the enrollment side, Mr. Isid. Please pass along a thanks.
Trustee, can I make a comment?
Please.
Again, I applaud Dr. Glover and Dr. Isid for their hard work in the enrollment and it, and it shows. One thing I would like for us to remember that we have had issues in the past with our customer service. And so I have not heard anything in regards to that. I'm sure we are focused on that, but I would want us to make sure we keep that elevated. That is part of retaining. And, and once you get them in, the customer service is extremely important. So I hope that we put an effort on customer service moving forward and continue to do that. A great job ever.
Yeah.
Trustee Corville, may I speak?
Yes, please.
Also to trustee Martin's point about the customer service piece, I think when we're looking at juniors and seniors and why they leave or decide to stay, I think in a lot of conversations we hear like they've given up on the university because they feel like the university has given up on them. Of course, we know that administrators will give the world for students, but that is not being executed on those beneath you all. You go into offices, they're tired, they're overworked, and then that is expressed to us, you know? So I think talking to more of the staff about, even though you're having a hard day, you still are encountering a student who feels like their education might be on the line and when they come and talk to you, you don't care. And it just, it's, it's a reflection. And I feel like it would be a lot more satisfying to walk into staff, regardless of what their staffing is, regardless of what their problems day-to-day are, that they truly do care. Because once we get into junior, senior roles, we're not getting the same handheld treatment that we got our freshman year. Even though I think some of those treatments should be extended all the way through your four years because each year is a new year, but those do decrease. And I think that customer service would be, customer service, technology and information access will definitely be the key to retaining juniors and seniors throughout the year.
Thank you. And I, I would just reiterate that again, part of maybe the pivot towards a retention plan is going to require, again, trustee Thomas, for you to be involved in it and the students and faculty to come up with a plan that we can execute. So thank you for your comments. And I completely agree with trustee Martin on the customer service. It's a vital piece of that retention plan, no question. Any other comments from any other board members or committee members?
Yeah, if I can add in, this is Bill Johnson.
Yes.
A couple of questions. And, and Mr. Isid, you, you talked about the applicant conversion piece too. At, like, like Steve, I'm a data person. And so, you know, we, 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 we always, you know, think about you know, customer acquisition costs and those kind of things. So, you know, can you provide us in your next next board meeting report with some hard data on what you're calling applicant conversion, what we'd call customer acquisition? You know, and maybe even break it down to in-state two fifty mile radius and, and outside the state kind of stuff to help us to see what the yield is when we see at faculty is when we see this enormous number of admit students, which to us as faculty members is interesting, but doesn't mean anything because it's the conversion to enrolled that is the number. And so when we look at our finances and we look at trying to get our best bang for the buck, you know, are our efforts really paying off in these separate, you know, discrete areas? And, you know, are our efforts paying off in the retention element too? Maybe we, and maybe Steve's right, you know, you need to transfer some of our effort to get a better yield on some of those kind of things. So I appreciate the transparency. This is the first time I've heard someone talk about applicant conversion. And that's really important that we know what it is that's working and what it is that may not be working. So, so thank you.
Good, good point, Dr. Johnson. Thank you, absolutely. Any other comments? Again, great report. Appreciate that. Okay, is there any other business? Seeing none, I move that the committee adjourned the meeting. Any discussion?
One, one question, trustee. When I came in, I came in initially on budget finance, I moved over. But I remember from at least one of the meetings that we had a development report that came through budget finance. Am I, did, did I miss it in my material or are we going to get one or what's?
Yeah, we, we didn't, there was no budget, there was no development report this time, it's coming in November.
Okay. So just off-cycle basically? Okay, we'll get it periodically, I guess is the answer. Okay. Good question. Good question, man. So do I hear a, a motion to adjourn the meeting? Andre?
Yes, I moved to adjourn.
I second, I second. Secretary Pendleton, can you take the role?
Yes, trustee Corville.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Okay, the motion's approved. We are adjourned.
We start back up at two o'clock.
Two PM, yes. And it will be a different link.